Okay, so this is a recording of the Southwood Library Board of Trustees. It is October 13th at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded. And just a reminder that we'll need to start the meeting with a roll call and then all votes should be done as a roll call as well. So if you've got to go through and everybody say your name so we can get started.
Michael McMahon.
Tammy Syak Basileon.
Maria Gallo.
Suzanne Davis.
Okay, great. So, um, does somebody want to make a movement to call to order?
We don't have any public comments. Public here, so we'll move on to communications.
Communications, okay, that is me. So, um, we were having a very busy October. We've been having, can everybody hear me okay? Let me know if you can't. We've been having a pretty busy October as far as programming goes. The Friends sponsored the Massachusetts Serial Killer Program last week and we had over 30 people on that. This Thursday, we have a presentation of abandoned towns and villages of New England and I have almost 40 people registered for that. So as far as virtual programs go, those are doing great. And then we have a couple others scattered throughout the end of the month. So we're having a pretty busy programming month, but everybody seems to be liking it. The first month of Heather Paparella, our Young Adult Librarian, did the book boxes in September. That was a hit. We are doing it for this month again. And we decided to kind of narrow it down a little bit and only do 10 per age group. Cause I think last month I had like 15 or almost 20 adults sign up for it. And I think I was losing my mind by the end of it. So I said 10 people per age group per month and we're already booking out into November. So that's going really well. Paige is still continuing to do virtual storytimes. And we also have been doing a great kind of grab and go crafts and other projects people can take home outside. The only unfortunate thing about that is, is that it's, it takes a lot of effort for staff to put it together and patrons really love it. However, the MBLC does not consider grab and go programs to be actual program numbers. So we can't count those as programs, which is too bad. What's that?
Can we rename it so they can count it?
No, I think even no matter what we call it, as long as they're not doing it in the library, then they can't count it. So I'm hoping that this year they will change that or at least find another way for us to report it. Because we're doing such a good business with that, that it's really unfortunate that those numbers just go poof. And you know, I mean, I record them, I report them because I think they're important. But you know, it would just be nice to be able to see those reflected on the state reports too. But patrons have been really liking them, so we're going to continue to do it. We have, I scheduled a staff meeting October 21st just to check in with everybody. We're going to try to do it on Zoom, which we did back in May. And it worked pretty well because it's hard to get everybody in at the same time. And I feel bad having people come in when they're not scheduled. And so we're going to do it on Zoom, just to kind of check in, see how things are going. And I have been, somebody's scratching at the door because he's mad he can't come out. He's like, oh, my toys are out here. I've been working with Anna from the Mass Library System. She is really great with marketing and everything like that. So I've been really working with her to kind of come up with a marketing plan for the library. I know I've been kind of talking about this for the last couple of months. And then COVID hit and then everything just went crazy. And now I feel like things are slowing down. We're getting used to things and I'm taking some time to try to come up with, you know, a marketing plan for us. Just to kind of ways to create engagement with the community. Because I think we can do a lot more with that. So I've got that going over the next couple of months. This week, I'm attending a virtual conference, which has been kind of interesting. The Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services. Now, we don't have a bookmobile, but we do outreach. And so it's been, today was the first day, it runs till Friday. So it's been pretty interesting. I've been doing a couple webinars throughout the day on different topics about outreach. This month, we've been working on really revamping the library website. So it's a little bit more organized and professional looking. We've kind of condensed some things, expanded others. I gave Heather Paparella, our Young Adult Librarian, access to edit the website. So she now has a teen page that she can edit herself. Hopefully, once we get a children's librarian, we'll get them permission and then they can have a children's page that they can edit themselves. So everybody, you know, it won't just be one person trying to get everything done. Everybody will have their own little, their own little silo or their own little page of stuff that they can post and update. Let's see, the, oh, the painting that we talked about a few months ago that we decided to take down. Somebody, one of the women who donated it wanted it back. So a couple of friends of hers came and packed it up and they took it back to her. She's in Vermont now. So that's, that's all well and done. Everything's been tied up with that. And I guess the only other thing I've been wondering is, we did get an invoice to renew membership to the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce. And last year was the first year that we were a member. So I just kind of wanted to get your opinion on if we should continue being a member. I mean, I think it can't help as far as, you know, the promotion and just being a member. I don't know, Mike, if you have any thoughts about that? I mean, I think it helps because back when they used to have events and we actually could go to events, it was nice to network, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, there haven't been any events to go to since March. And then the executive director retired at the end of September. So they're in the process of hiring a new director. So it's, it's hard for any business, being a member of the chamber at this moment.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think I'd like to continue our membership for another year and just see, you know, I mean, there's a lot we can do with it, I think. And then just this year, we would, we weren't, I think we joined the end of last year and then we, we went to an event. I know I saw you there and then, you know, COVID hit and nothing else really happened. So I'll probably renew for another year, just to keep our membership going with that. And that was it as far as my report for communications. The minutes I sent out to everybody today, hopefully, everybody got it. I don't think, I don't think I noticed any corrections, but.
The minutes look good to me. Any other, anyone have any corrections to make?
I didn't get the minutes.
Do you want me to send them to you again?
Right now, then I'll lose the Zoom connection.
Okay, then I will leave it be.
Okay, we can defer the minutes until next month.
Oh, we could approve them and I could abstain.
We wouldn't have quorum.
Do we want to vote on the minutes?
Can the three of us do it?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion to accept the minutes. Tammy Syak Basileon.
And a second? Is that you, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor? Michael McMahon, yes.
Tammy Syak Basileon, yes.
Maria, yes. Suzanne Davis abstained.
And the director's report for September. I mean, so I sent that out to everybody as well. Our numbers, of course, circulation has gone down. That's pretty self-explanatory. We have been having patrons come in and use the library. I mean, there's still a good number that just want to pick up curbside and that works. I think until we open fully, we're not going to get the same numbers that we used to have. But I mean, the good news is it, our reference numbers have gone up. You know, our door numbers actually went up as well too, which is pretty impressive. So, and you know, our interlibrary loans in and out are also pretty good. And at the, something new this month, I started adding curbside because the Board of Library Commissioners recommends that we record every curbside pickup that we put outside. So this 138, and this was as of September 19th. So this is only reflects like the last quarter of the month. So 138, I think is still pretty good. So, you know, we've, we've been doing, doing a pretty good job, I think. You know, some numbers are down, but that's to be expected. But, um, you know, as far as reference went up by 58, so I think that's pretty good.
Agreed.
Yes.
I mean, we, we all kind of know that this year isn't going to be used to reflect anything. I mean, so, so I think it's, you know, we take it, we take it out if it is and it's, I mean, it's not bad. I'm, I'm happy with it.
Is it time for church? What was that?
It almost sounds like the Harry Potter theme song.
I'm sorry, that's my chime clock.
Oh, okay.
It chimes every quarter hour.
I thought it was a clock in Westfield.
A little closer than that.
So I don't know if anybody had any questions about these or, or if you want to approve them.
I think we can just move on to old business.
Okay, old business. So, I hear my echoing, I'm sorry. So, um, our reopening plan, as I've said, we're still, we're still taking appointments. The governor released new restrictions and guidelines for moving to the next phase about businesses can allow more people inside. And, you know, I discussed it with Tammy at the Board of Health and I discussed it with Carl. And I said, you know, we're already doing 10 appointments an hour for browsing for, for computers. We've never filled up an hour. I've never had to turn anybody away. And our staff is so used to the way we're doing things. I don't want to throw another thing at them and have to, you know. I think we're going to stick with our numbers because it worked. You know, we've never filled up an hour. So I consulted with them, we're just going to stick with what we're doing and, you know, just keep an eye on them. You know, because our staff is, as of today, I've heard there are two cases of COVID at the schools and I know our staff is concerned about that. So I think we're just going to stick with what we're doing. You know, we're used to it, we're comfortable with it and, you know, just see how things progress. Sorry, Tammy, what was that?
Never know if things are going to be back or forwards.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be a lot harder to kind of change things, change things and then change them back. So, so we're just going to leave them as is for now. We did decide, we had originally set a time for 2 to 5, Monday through Friday, to have the computers just reserved for students. But I think with, you know, with the school giving away, with a Chromebooks or whatever they gave away, you know, there really hasn't been much of a need. In fact, it was kind of an, you know, a slight inconvenience for our adult patrons. So we just have decided to stop doing that. You know, if there, if there becomes a need for it, we can revert back. There just, there hasn't been demand for computers by the student. So we're just going back to, you know, the computers being available at all times for everyone. And our fiscal year 2021 budget, we finished, at the end of September, we finished the first quarter of the year. And now we're into the second. So we were able to request another certain percentage of our line items for purchasing materials. So we're still able to keep ordering. You know, I think they're just going to go through the whole year, quarter by quarter. So we have a portion for the next quarter. So we, we are on track, we're not doing too bad. I think we'll, unless anything changes and we aren't able to get money for the future quarters, we will be okay for our mandatory purchasing for our, our state aid that we received. I think we have to spend 19% of our budget. So we, we are doing good, but you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on it as things progress through the year. See, and then, yeah, going off of that, in, or actually, I should say, in our, in our fiscal 2021 budget, we haven't been able to hire a new children's librarian yet, but both Mike and I have been in touch with Carl just to kind of keep it, keep it fresh. Now, we, we still do have an open position that we would really like to fill. They're just kind of waiting on the, the state budget to see what's going on with that. And for, did somebody say something? Nope. And for new business, so I did a little bit more research and I also attended, there was a CWMars meeting on information for libraries going fine free. I sent you a whole packet of stuff. I totally didn't expect you to read it, but there were a couple graphs and charts in there that, it seems like it's, it's becoming the new thing to go find free. And, and I, in my opinion, I'm 100% in favor of going fine free. I think it just, in my opinion, it creates a much better relationship between the staff and the patron. Because it gets rid of those, those negative interactions where you have to, you know, you know, deal with somebody arguing about their fines or things like that. And in my experience, it, it hasn't been a deterrent to people getting things back on time. You know, if people are going to be late with things, they're going to be late no matter what, so.
I have rethought since our last meeting. And I, I, at first was a little nervous about, you know, fines. But the more I thought about it, we're a free public library, we should be a free library. And I withdraw any objection.
Yes.
So I agree with you there.
Yes, um, yeah, and hopefully, hopefully some of the information I sent.
Was helped.
That CWMars, there are 46% of CWMars libraries are fine free. They sent a graph of fine free libraries and most of us in the area, there, I think it looks like there's maybe two or three of us in the immediate area that do charge and a whole smattering that don't. And so, and there, there was also a list of everybody that has gone fine free. And then many, many libraries this year have gone fine free, mostly because of COVID. I mean, as of 2020, Westfield is now fine free. So there are quite a few out there that have gone that route. Now.
That's just for late items, right? That's not for if a book gets destroyed.
Oh, yeah, no, if, if something is destroyed or damaged, we would still charge. This is just anything late. So we can also be kind of particular about things too, that, you know, we don't charge late fines for books. But if it's something more expensive, like the library of things item, like a power tool or a museum pass. Yeah, yeah, hot spot, you know, so we can, we can not charge for like basic, like books, magazines, but actually charge for like larger ticket items, you know, that, that, that would be in demand, that, you know, have a very specific due date and like with the hot spots, there's usually somebody waiting for it. So, so I don't know if that helps in your, well, Suzanne, you're on my side. You know, that we, that we wouldn't charge for books, magazines, audiobooks, but we can have it set to charge for like hot spots, power tools, anything like that, so. So, so that, I mean, that is my argument for it. It, you know, it creates a better relationship between patrons and staff. It makes us look more accommodating, you know. I think there's the perception of the, the librarian, you know, sitting behind the desk with, you know, the mean librarian who's going to charge you fines and block your card and this and that. And I think it just creates a better perception of us. I did have CWMars run a report on how many patrons have blocked cards in the system. And there, there are quite a few that are, are Southwood patrons that have their cards blocked. They can't use their cards because of their fines. So I think it gives us a really good chance to kind of, we can do some really good marketing and PR with this in that, you know, this, this is what we're doing. We are going through and they can go through and wipe people's fines. So anything that patron, you know, not, obviously not lost books or anything like that, anything bigger. But like if you have two bucks from a lost, or a late, late book, then, you know, I mean, so as of, you know, we have, I mean, there's, there's a good number of patrons that do have blocked cards. I have, you know, adult numbers, kids, young adults, senior citizens. And there's, there's quite a few of our patrons that we have potentially lost because, you know, I mean, if somebody gets a fine on their card, and especially right now when times are so hard for people and money's very tight, you know, they think, I can't pay it off, I can't use the library. And, you know, that's not the, the perception or the image we want to have.
So how, how would you want to let them know that you've eliminated their fines?
You know, that, I, I, there's a couple other libraries that have done really good campaigns with this. And I would probably get in touch with them because we can do, we can do a whole, you know, special, we can do an email blast, social media posts, do something in the links, like the, there's people who've come up with really catchy taglines for this and I can't think of any right now. But, you know, that, that we've gone fine free. And so I think there's, you know, we can get that probably put in the news and, you know, I think that could be a really, a really good way to, I wouldn't go through and try to, try to reach every individual person. I don't think that's just going to be possible with what we have going on right now. But, you know, if we can get the word out there, then, yeah, I, I think it could be a really good thing for us.
There's also, coming from my work background, doing that, going fine free is very inclusive because a lot of people, not just with disabilities, but in general, if you have staff or, you know, some people that I work with, they could visit a library five times a week, different libraries. And then you have to, there's residential staff that, you know, have to keep track, when to do, what did they check out? It just, this eliminates that where they're still feel welcome, so.
Yeah.
We could bill it as celebration of the end of 2020.
Yeah. We're canceled, we canceled everything else, we might as well cancel this too. Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's, that's my opinion of it. Obviously, and I had Heather, our Assistant Director, run the numbers. And, I mean, it is, we do, we do make money from the fines that does go to our gift account. This was from, I had her run from January to December 2019. She had about.
$2,300.
2,300, yeah, 2,300.
It's in the minutes.
In fines, oh, there you go, perfect, yeah, in fines. Which is, is not, I mean, it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a substantial amount, so.
Of course it is.
Yeah, I mean, and then, you know, I had her, I had her look at the numbers for fines from this year because we haven't been charging fines anyway because we haven't, we don't want money going back and forth. So, I mean, you know, this year is kind of, I guess, a good example year of what it would look like if we weren't charging fines. But, you know, people, people are really generous anyway. If we were to not do fines, what I would do, or what I would suggest we do is what I did at another library we worked and we just have kind of a jar where they just put in whatever they want. You know, if they feel, because they, sometimes people feel guilty about it and they just want to put something in there. And honestly, we made more money from that jar than we ever would charging like 10 cents a year, 20 cents a year. So, so that, that is my suggestion, is that, you know, as of a certain date, I don't want to say, have a set date in mind, but let's say as an example, as of like November such and such, you know, that we would stop charging fines, we would just have a simple jar that if people wanted to donate, they can donate. And that's, that's my suggestions. And if anybody had any questions, comments? Yeah, that's, that's my suggestion. And I'm also hoping to kind of work with the Friends too, to kind of, I told them about this at their meeting last month and they're meeting tomorrow night, you know, that, so if we are losing this little bit of income, maybe we need to kind of beef up our fundraising in other areas to kind of compensate for that.
What do you, what do you think, Maria? You haven't said anything about this topic.
I agree with Lynn and Suzanne. I think we should go find free on the books and magazines and small items.
Okay. Do you want to take a vote on this?
Want to do that?
Do you want to start it November 1st?
Okay.
What is November 1st? November 1st is a Sunday. Do you want to say November 2nd?
Okay.
November 2nd. And then as of, I mean, can we just say a tentative date in case I can't get everything? Because I have to, I have to talk with CWMars and get, because they have to do the technical stuff on their end too.
Well, then why don't we say by November 15th? I was just gonna.
Yeah, that, that gives me some time in case I have to do any last minute things, but.
Okay. Well, you can tell them it's retroactive to, well, nevermind, why do we have to? Doesn't make sense?
Once it starts, it will, I will hopefully have them wipe everything out that currently is there, so.
Okay, so it's going fine free by November 15th? Is that basically the motion? Yes. Second.
So that was.
Suzanne, second.
All in favor, Michael, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Suzanne, yes? unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it. I think this is going to be a really good thing for us.
Well, you know, the Friends have had two pop-up book sales.
Yes.
Since our last meeting, and I think they've made over $200, haven't they?
And you know what they've done too? They've had a jar and say.
It's all donations.
Free people take a paperback book and put in five bucks.
Yeah.
I mean, if we can have that as a jar on our desk, then, then great. I mean, and then if we can have one person empty it out at the end of the night, handle the money once, put it away, put it in the safe, then, perfect. You know, there's no money going back and forth or anything like that. Okay, so thank you guys for that. So next on the agenda is Arison State Aid Reports. As of Friday, I think it was, was it Friday? We, Heather Dunphy, our Assistant Director, finished both reports. We've had them both sent out. Mike signed them and we were in good shape. We met the municipal appropriation requirement, met the mandatory purchasing. We should be okay for this year too. We are in a lot better standing than a lot of other libraries because we are open. You know, and a lot of other libraries are going to have a problem because they haven't been able to open their doors yet. And we have to report, we have to, we're required to be open a certain number of hours. So we've been very lucky in that we are only down one staff person. There, I think that the Westfield Library is down eight or nine people. So we're, we're very lucky in that we, we have our almost full staff. So we're doing good with that. And next, I'm, obviously this year, we're not going to be able to do the volunteer brunch. So I don't know if anyone had any ideas. We've already sent out cards to all of our volunteers, just checking in, saying, hi, you know, we miss you, we hope you're doing well. I don't know if there's anything we want to do for them this year. I haven't seen any of them. It's, it's so sad, most of them, you know, I haven't seen most of them since, since March. It's been very sad. So I don't know if there's any ideas or, I mean, if you want to, you can reach out to me after the meeting, if you had any. I just, I'd like to do something, I'm just not sure, not sure what, you know. One of the staff suggested getting gift cards to local businesses, but I don't know how we can get the money to do. get the money to do that. But I'd like to do something, even if it's something small. Um, and then, um, the last thing we're trying to figure out how to do is do our curbside services in winter because obviously this isn't going to end anytime soon. So, um.
I like the little plastic box.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a heavier, duty-er, um, what's, what are they called? Totes? Get a heavy duty one and then get like a sturdy table or something and put it out there. So we're trying to figure out our, our mechanics of still running things in the wintertime. I mean, we're lucky that we have an overhang.
Yes.
We have that, but, um, so obviously it's going to keep going. It's going to keep going through the winter. Um, we're just trying to figure out how to make it work. So, yeah, if anybody has any ideas for the volunteers, please reach out to me because I, I'd like to do something, but I'm not quite sure what. So.
But if you do something, I mean, I don't know how many people you would get, but something like a drive-through thank you thing or something where you.
Oh, drive by everybody's houses.
Oh, I mean, like have them come like drive through the library.
You have like a pickup bag to.
Yeah. Oh, that would be nice. Yeah.
Or even like a gift card to one of the, the, um, friends book sale things. You're entitled to a free bag or a free book or a free item or something.
Okay, yeah, I like that. Yeah. And then we could do something nice and nice for them. Yeah, I think that's awesome. And then it would give them a chance to, to say hello and give, because we have, I mean, we haven't seen them and it's been very sad. Okay. That's all nice. I like that idea. Okay. Um, and then that was it from me. So if, I don't know if anybody has any last minute questions.
Do you need any more candy for the end of the month?
Um, we can take more if you have it. I think they're going to get a big turnout, so.
I haven't, I haven't dropped it off yet, but I have candy for you.
That's fine.
During the week, when I go by, I'll drop it off.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we could get another couple of big bags here and there, we should be in good shape. I mean, there's, there's going to be nothing worse than running out of candy halfway through. So I'd rather have more than not enough.
You can always hand out leftover Halloween candy to the volunteers.
There you go. They won't know the difference. Yeah, we've got, we've got little bags. I think I bought like 300 little, um, I was trying to get the cute little Halloween bags, but those were so expensive. And the little, the clear ones, you could get like 40 to a pack at the dollar store. So.
Yeah.
There's candy in there. I don't think they're going to care what the bag looks like. So.
Not the kids world, that's right.
Yeah, they don't care. There's candy in there. So, yeah, and, um, we've got it. People have donated a nice mixture of stuff. So we've got stuff for, you know, if there's allergies or anything, we have, we have backup plans. So should be fun. Um, also another good way to kind of get the library out there and we're going to decorate my Jeep really tacky-like and it'll be a good time. So, so they can see library staff out there painting and candy. So. Yeah, if nobody else has anything, anything else, then, um, I will, I will start tackling the fine free stuff probably, um, end of this week. And we can kind of get the wheels going on that and come up with a plan to, to, yeah, get the word out. And I guess it's good that staff is meeting October 21st, so I can fill them in on all the fun. Okay, yeah. So if nobody has anything else, if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Tammy.
That is, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay, is that, I'm going to.